Joe in here. So, as we discussed, we are holding on eighty, pending some information from the planning commission. Everyone should have gotten this memorandum from the city planner, Brian Friend. And so we should have more information on that at the next meeting, since they are meeting next week. So ordinance number one, this changes the compensation schedule in regards to the fire inspector?
Yes, currently we have one full-time union fire inspector and two part-timers that work twenty hours a week. But the, it only calls, allows for one, so what I've done is, for the last two years, I've had a part-time fire medic in that spot, assigned to the Fire Prevention Bureau. So it's just, still meets the job description, because it's any other duties I have assigned. And we need it, there's a lot of things, but it's not just inspections, it's inspections, it's fire investigation, it's free plan, it's public education, and there's a big use for it.
So we have that listed as needed?
Correct.
So we'll change it from one to as needed. Any further questions on that? Is everyone following that?
Yes, I know.
All right, let's do one, two, three on that, please. Ordinance two is changing the agreement with Chagrin Valley Engineering, just raising fees from them for this year. I think we had a raise in fee the last two years, and they'll probably continue to go up with any contract service. This is for Joe's position. Does anyone have any questions on that? There was a very nice letter, Joe, and all the accomplishments and all the great things he's done for our city, and the fee schedule on that. So any questions on that? And it also compared, they had the comparison for the 2024 fees. All right, so let's do one, two, three on that, to get that taken care of. Next is to go out to bid for ledge, ledge road, for ledge road resurfacing. That is from North Bedford to Shepherd.
Shepherd, correct. This will be a project for this summer coming up. As you might recall, we received fifty percent of the cost of this project in the form of a grant from OPWC, grants worth four hundred and two thousand dollars.
And resurfacing is, is a quicker project than fully ripping it out, than?
It is a little bit quicker project, yes.
And that, that road should be in decent shape, because no trucks allowed on that road, right?
On ledge? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, um, let's do one, two, three on that. We're usually pretty, you know, it's no secret, no surprise to us that we were doing this project.
If you could, please.
All right. And then next is for the, the road, the road program for 2025, going out to bid for that?
Yeah, correct. So you guys have the exhibit to go along with the legislation, list the roads we're going to pave. The only thing I would mention is, you'll see the last road on there is Starlight, it says possible alternate, but after a little further analysis we've done since we put this exhibit together, it won't be an alternate, it'll just be part of the, the contract itself, so we will do Starlight.
And the road conditions, you did that twenty twenty-three or twenty-four?
Uh, no, just last fall, November, yeah.
Oh, you did, okay.
Which I think you guys all have a copy of that. And I'm sure you have a copy of the annual roads PowerPoint presentation we do each year, so we'll, when we get to this piece of legislation on the floor, we'll go through the PowerPoint as well.
So after it's introduced, if you guys are all right, we'll have the presentation, and then you can ask any questions, decide from there.
All right, once again, this is no surprise, we, this is something we do every year. Any questions on that? All right, let's do one, two, three on that. All right, next we have to appoint committee, do committee assignments, everything's been really static for a while. We do need to replace Jan on Public Works. Is it, first of all, is everyone happy with what they have here? Obviously, as Mr. Ventura pointed out, we haven't met, it's not a big time sink, but it's stuff that we do need to have in place, just in case it's needed. So that being said, Vinny or Jeff would like to be on Public Works and Utilities.
Yeah, your call. I, I.
I'm not, I'm not going to point, who wants to do it? All right, so it's Vinny.
I thought you said you were.
I wasn't. All right, so Jeff, you're going to do building and zoning committee?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, can I, can, can we change that, since I've been working with the building department, now that I, I thought, yeah.
I have no problem.
Can we circle back with this, once we choose Jan's replacement to maybe fill out some of these?
Well, that person's only going to be here for a year, so I don't know if I, once again, we're, they're most likely not going to have any meetings, so.
I know, I'm just, it's just so that they're involved, and they want to be.
Sure.
Even if they're here for a year, we do this yearly, too. Most of these, anyway.
Yeah, we can circle back to it, I just wanted to make sure that we get that.
Sure, okay.
So you've been alternated on the cemetery board, you haven't gone to the meetings or anything, right?
No, Jan's always taking care of it.
Okay. Um, how much do they meet, Mark, once, just once a year, quarterly, or?
Quarterly, I think, and then we have an annual, obviously, in March.
We're off this year, though, right?
I thought we were off last year.
We're, I think, on this year.
Yeah, I think we were off last year, and Jan just went to the meetings, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You, you don't think that's, I'm, I'm almost positive.
I thought we, I thought we were coming off.
Either way, you should have somebody.
That being said, Dave, or do you think you'd be able to do it a quarter, do you know when their quarterly meetings are?
I don't, I think it is called.
Okay.
I can look at what Jan will find out when that is.
All right, so Dave is going to be.
Get any information I need.
Does anyone want to be the alternate on this, case, because they're, you know, they're going to call their meetings as needed, so if Dave can't make it, we need someone to back up.
I can do it anytime.
All right, Jeff is going to be alternate. All right, so we got all those filled, safety committee. So then, the volunteer firemen's dependency board, I'm happy to stay on that. That is as needed, right? If there's incidents, and then payout needs to happen, and they, then they can be.
In forty-five years.
Right. Should be no official responsibilities, except to me, selecting the member.
Right.
And then forward that to the state, and then that's probably going to be it.
Okay.
Not that one.
So we're going to vote on that one, but I'm happy to be nominated for that. Is anyone else interested in being nominated for that?
I have a problem.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
Nominate each other. So we will also be electing president, vice president, Parks and Recreation and Finance. I would love to stay on Parks and Recreation, if someone's, if you guys are okay with that?
I'd be glad to.
I'd accept it if, if nominated.
Yes, sure.
Mr. Ventura, are you still interested in Finance Committee?
I am, John and I have a, Mr. Veris and I have a very good working relationship.
All right. I am going to nominate Mr. Garvis for council president. I'd also like to nominate Mr. Ventura for vice president.
Thank you.
Just so there's no, no surprises when we get out there. Okay. So that is this. Anything else I said that I wanted to discuss? He keeps my notes. Okay. All right, excellent. Well, we have some time, and we got all that stuff done, so we will see everyone out on the floor.
I like that there's a cumber over it, but it's not actually a lot.
Good evening and welcome to the January ninth, two thousand twenty-five council meeting. It is seven thirty PM. Mr. Hoover, please call the roll.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Now I ask Mr. O'Brien to lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening grateful for the privilege of serving our community. Guide us as we deliberate on matters that affect the lives of our neighbors. Grant us the wisdom to make decisions that reflect fairness, compassion, and foresight. Help us to work together while respecting the, the diverse perspectives of our city and its people. May our decisions today be guided by humility and a shared commitment to the common good. As we take on the responsibilities entrusted to us, we must also consider the needs of the most vulnerable among us. And may those effects be inspired by the spirit of collaboration. Bless each council member and staff, as well as those who have gathered here to participate, and may our work today honor the trust placed in us. Amen. And now the Honorable Dick Bulner will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will do the election of council officers, and I'm going to start with president. Do I have a nomination for president?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Garvis for president.
Any other nominations? I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none.
Close nomination.
I will close the nomination, this is different, you know, once a year. All those in favor of Mr. Garvis for president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Garvis, look forward to working with you. I will say that it's been very awesome working with you, we've known each other a long time. Not like this is goodbye, you're still going to be here, but you've done an amazing job, and I can't thank you enough for helping to make my job a little easier from council. So Jeff, you've got some big, big shoes to fill, sir.
I do, I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good staff to work with.
Okay, I will open it up for nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Vinny Ventura for vice president.
Second.
Any other nominations? All right, I will close the nominations, all in favor of Mr. Ventura for vice president?
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Much of a change there, but.
It's, it's, be a pleasure to continue working, and I can, I've learned a lot from Madam President Brandt in, in the past three years. Always, always beneficial to gain more knowledge.
Thank you. Okay, nominations for Parks and Recreation representative.
I will nominate Ms. Brandt to continue in that post.
I will second that.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations, and all those in favor of Ms. Brandt continuing as the Parks and Recreation Board member, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome back for.
Here we go.
Okay, the next one will be the Firemen's Dependency Board, we need two nominations for this one. Do I have nominations for the Firemen's Dependency Board?
I'll make a motion for Ms. Brandt to be on the Firemen's Dependency Board.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Garvis.
Second.
Thank you.
Is that a second for both, do we get second for both of us?
Yep.
Okay.
Jeff, second.
Any other nominations? I'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Mr. Garvis and Mr. Ventura, or no, I'm sorry, Ms. Brandt, I'm sorry, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, last one is Finance. I will open the nominations for the Finance Chair.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Ventura for Finance Chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? All right, nominations are closed, all those in favor of Mr. Ventura, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comments, we have none this evening. Correspondents from the clerk?
Yes, I have one email, sent to Chief Ripley. Says, "Chief Ripley, a few weeks ago, my brother-in-law was involved in a wood splitter accident. My sister called nine-one-one, and within minutes, Macedonia Fire EMS were on scene. Because of their professionalism and quick response, they were able to help him with immediate assistance and took him to Metro, which turned out to be the best place for him, as he had to go through two surgeries in a seventy-two hour period. Thankfully, he is going to make a full recovery. Northfield Center Township was a great part, has a great partnership with Macedonia Fire, and this is just another example of this. We're lucky to have such dedicated and professional emergency response crews, and I want to personally thank them all, and specifically, the team that helped my brother-in-law. And those were Lieutenant Dave Averth, Medics Rob Sierson, Mike Velazquez, Brian Lefler, and Brian Friend. Please pass along my sincere gratitude and appreciation to all of them. That's from Russ Mazzola, Northfield Center Township."
Thank you. Moving into pending our new legislations, starting with ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to offer ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing the current compensation schedule for the non-union employees of the City of Macedonia of Ohio.
Chief Ripley.
Yes, this just increases the number of part-time inspectors we have. We currently have a full-time forty-hour inspector, and we're utilizing two currently, one being assigned part-time fire medic, Fire Prevention Bureau handles, all the inspections for all the communities, fire investigation, fire education, and all our pre-planning for all of our buildings.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number one carries. Ordinance number two.
I'd like to offer ordinance two, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance submitting the agreement between the City of Macedonia and Chagrin Valley Engineering Limited relative to compensation for engineering services provided to the city.
Director Jalati.
Yes, respectfully, please, if you could keep me around for another year.
I, I'd like to keep you around, I think you're doing a good job, so.
Thank you.
That's my two cents. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I would move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance two, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance two passes, you still have a job.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. I know I'm, I'm being kind of coy about it, but in the letter that he sent to council, he talks a lot about the, the grants and things that he's gotten to the city, and, and how much that helps us. I mean, tonight, we're going to vote on one that's bringing in four hundred and two thousand dollars, that are not coming from our coffers, they're coming from somewhere else. So there's a lot of value in having a really good, talented engineer for the city, and you, you and your firm are definitely that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Resolution number three.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number three, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to resurface ledge road.
Mr. Jalati.
Uh, yes, as we just discussed, this is the project, it'll be fifty percent funded from OPWC, that grant's worth four hundred and two thousand dollars. This project is to pave ledge road from North Bedford to Shepherd Road this summer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I'm offering resolution number three, twenty twenty-five, and move to adopt, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution three carries. Resolution number four.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution four, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for various roadway improvements for the twenty twenty-five road improvement program.
So at this point, I'll turn it over to Director Jalati for our pavement condition reading and update for our road program for twenty twenty-five.
Sure, thanks, Mayor, and Christie will roll through the slides here for us, so. Sure, thanks, Mayor, and Christie will roll through the slides here for us, so. I will do that, thank you. Boba Inc., Highland Point Parkway, Hampton, Sherwood, Ashford, and Starlight. Ledge Road under separate contract.
Fantastic.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I've moved that we pass Resolution Four, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution Four carries. Any other motions or legislative acts?
Hearing none, I will go into the Mayor's Report. I'll start with the new service building. We have selected a criteria architect. The name is Jeffrey A. Grusenmeyer and Associates. We're working through that process now. More to come on that in the near future. We're negotiating the rate and things like that at this point, so we'll be moving forward from there. We had a meeting today talking a little bit about that, and I'm very ambitious. I don't have a lot of patience for the government mule, and we're going to get this thing done within two years, and I'm saying it now. On this date, within two years, we'll be operating out of that building, so I'm going to make that happen.
The finance director isn't here to tell you no?
To touch on that, he was very sick today and came into work, and I told him he should probably not be around anyone, so I don't like spreading colds around to everyone, so that's why our awesome finance director's not here. But more to come on the new service building. I'm very excited for that. Everyone knows that's kind of my pet project I've had since the day I walked into office, so I'm excited to move that thing forward. Next on my list is, I want to pay a little homage to Mrs. Tully. You know, her retirement came as a surprise to me. I didn't know that that was coming. I've served with Jan for a number of years here, and we've been through some pretty treacherous things over time, and I just want to thank her for the time that she spent with us and the things that we accomplished together, so I wish her nothing but well in her, I guess this is like second or third retirement, but I hope she's well and she's happy, and that's all I can wish for her in the future. A little bit of a heartbreaking note, one of our longtime friends in the community, Bart Benjamin, passed away. Anyone who knows Bart knew that he was a big personality, a great guy, very fun to be around, and, you know, he's going to be sorely missed, and this came as a little surprise to me because I literally had just texted him a few days before he passed and said, "Hey, I haven't seen you in a while," and he said, you know, he had a few things going on. I think this was kind of sudden. I don't know that this was something we knew was coming, but he will definitely be missed. Everyone who knows Bart loves Bart. I mean, he was just a great guy, and I'm going to miss him very, very much, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers and his family, because again, it was somewhat sudden, so we'll miss you, Bart. Today is National Law Enforcement Day. Pay attention and give the thanks to the people that keep us safe. I sent an email to the Chief today thanking him and his staff for what they do for us day-to-day. You know, a lot of times, people in the community tell me they love our police officers, and that goes a long way, because that shows the extra commitment and the abilities that they have to show and prove that they want to be here, they want to do good for us, and to have that come through is amazing, because society right now is somewhat difficult when it comes to the law enforcement, and it's a little troubling to me. But I know that what I can control here within this city, with our Chief and the staff that we have and the administrators of it all, we're doing a great job. And Chief, I can't thank you enough for your guys and gals and what they do day-to-day, because it's amazing, and we only get good things from that, so thank you for all you do, and it does not go unnoticed, and I want everyone to know that we appreciate them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Last but not least, please don't drive distracted. It's 2025. Cars have a lot of technology in them. You do not need to be on your phone when you're driving. Put the phone down. Do not ever text and drive. That's my biggest pet peeve in the entire world. I'm going to go off this year a little more on it, because I'm going to make sure everyone hears me on this. Do not drive distracted in Macedonia. Do not have a phone in your hand in Macedonia. It's probably not going to work out very well for you, so put the phones down, drive your car. That's what's most important.
And with that, I will go into committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission, January meeting is Wednesday, the 15th, at 6:00 o'clock upstairs in the Rec Center. We haven't met since October, so we'll have a lot of good stuff to discuss about what's coming up for the new year, and that's the end of my report.
Finance Committee has completed everything for 2024 and going into 2025. As soon as Mr. Ferris gets back from whatever it is he's got, I'm sure we'll set something up again to get a little advantage on anything that's coming up.
Thank you.
Just one more note. Mrs. Tully was the city's representative for the Cemetery Commission, the Cemetery Committee. Mr. Finley was the alternate, and he'll be taking over her spot. So, once we figure out whether or not Macedonia will be represented on the board this year, Dave will be attending those meetings, so if anyone has any questions about the cemetery, you can go through Dave.
Thank you. Department reports. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to talk a little bit about snowfall. I looked up some statistics. In the last two years, the first two years I was here, have been here, we had 39 and a half inches of snow. We average in Macedonia about 71 inches of snow a year, and so that was 40 inches in two years. Last 48 hours, we've had 11 inches, and in the first five days of January of this year, we had 15 inches. We've had 26 inches in basically a week. So, the guys are out working hard, and I just give all the props to them. They lose a lot of sleep, stressed with job. You're trying to do a lot of things at once and not hurt anyone. Just, I give them all the credit. Just tell everyone, like you say, put your phones down and stay back. Stay away, get over, give people, give the drivers space. I heard on the radio, like, 19 ODOT trucks have been hit this year. There was a fatality already with an ODOT truck, and the vast majority of our people are hitting, you know, the back of ODOT trucks. So, they're just following too close, so the number one thing is just to stay back. That's all that happened.
As we always like to joke with Director Wilson, he came from the Columbus area. Welcome to northeast Ohio.
So, apparently.
You dodged a bullet this year in Columbus.
This is a lake effect.
This is what we call a lake effect fund. Director Jalati.
Yeah, thank you. I've already spoken enough tonight, so no further report except to say thank you to Council for your support on all the legislation tonight.
Thank you. Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to credit Director Jalati here for helping us with Longwood Drive, getting that paved last summer. That was a huge help to our infrastructure there in the parks. So, it wasn't just our streets in the community, it was also the park drive, which was instrumental in helping us multiple events and getting traffic in and out in a safe manner, plus the fact that we have hundreds of baseball games that take place in Longwood Park throughout the course of summer. So, they did a great job of working around everything that was going on, so thank you for that as well. You're welcome. So, speaking of projects, we have a renovation project we're working on currently. We should have the budget projections from the architect, either at the end of this week, being tomorrow or next week, so then we will be able to start moving forward towards our end goal of creating the family changing rooms and doing the upstairs offices during the first quarter of 2025, so we're excited about that progress. We have spent, and thanks to Council for approving the budget at the end of last year, so we're already starting our capital project planning for this year as far as getting everything lined up, because obviously, for us, it's a little more challenging. We try to line up around seasons and around Parks and Rec closures, and then obviously, we can only do so much to the fields while we're in operation. So, we're doing a lot of planning around the seasons right now, so I appreciate that and all the work staff's putting into it. Winter programming is in full effect, and staff is already about done with spring program planning, and registration for that will open up in February. So, kind of crazy while we're talking about Director Wilson and all his snow, and we're about to program spring sports, so thank you.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thanks, Mayor. 467 helped us tickets close last year. Just want to say thank you to all the service guys for all their hard work. The roads look great. Looking forward to a successful 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. The house at 1264 East Twinsburg was finally razed. That house has been a problem for a long time. We were able to accomplish that without coming before Council because we agreed with the owner that it would be in his best interest to pay the contractor directly and agreed to the demolition, so he did that. He saved some money on advertising, and it worked out for both ways. We will be coming to Council, though, for a couple approvals for the next couple months or so. The first one will be for sidewalk program. We need your approval to go out for bid. And then the next one is, they were working on is on the gas station at the old BP. We are working on the demolition of that building, and I think you'll see some coming for your desk in the very near future. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. ATR has closed out all of 2024, all of the benefits, all of the insurance, and we have everything loaded for 2025, meaning all of your vacation, everything that you're looking to use for 2025 is now in the system. All of the new benefits and deductions are also all in and ready to go. End of reports.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Council for passing the change to officially add the additional part-time inspector. Excuse me. Also, last year, we finished with 4,650 calls district-wide. Approximately 2350 of those were in the city themselves. You'll be hearing some numbers at the next Council meeting about the history and how that has gone up, which I found staggering today, but you'll hear that next time. Other than that, end of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Jakapowicz.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you mentioning National Law Enforcement Day. We do have a group of hard-working officers, and they do appreciate the support they get from this community. Also, I'm happy to announce our current manpower situation. We're finally able to have two full-time SROs, one staffing lead school that's in Macedonia, so Officer Daly started Monday at Ledge View, so we're happy to have her there. End of report.
I'm going to also add to that, because it reminded me, I've seen some chatter on social media about our SRO vehicle. I want to be very clear. Macedonia funds for that vehicle. That is our vehicle. It was our decision to put that stuff, the stickers that are on there, is not the school's decision. That was all us. That's a vehicle we need regardless, and I thought it was a wonderful idea that was brought up from someone within your department chief, and I think it looks really good. But it's a versatile vehicle. It can be used for just going to the school and other things, but I want to be very, very clear. That's not the school that funded that. That was us that funded that.
And it is a fully functional patrol vehicle. Yes, it does have the graphics with the knight in Nordenia, but it also has the Macedonia Police emblem saying "Police," and it will be on the road as a functioning police vehicle in the summer.
And you know anything about me. I graduated from Nordenia. It means a little bit of something, so I really like that thing, and I think it's awesome, so. If y'all don't like it, I'm sorry. Apologize for that.
Director Godetti.
No report, sir.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I just want to remind residents that we do have an open council seat. Since there is only a year left on the term for Mrs. Tully, that we will need to appoint someone to fill the seat through the end of 2025. Anyone who's 18 or over and has lived in Macedonia for at least two years can apply. Please send your resume and cover letter to our clerk, John Hoover, jhoover@macedonia.oh.us. Those are due by January 17th at 3:00 PM. We need to choose a new, or we need to appoint a new council member by January 30th.
31st.
31st, within 30 days of Mrs. Tully's last official day. So, we will be conducting interviews during the week of the 20th, so if you're interested, please get those applications or your resume and cover letter in. That's all on that.
Can I add one thing to that, because it's very important? You must have lived in a community for two years continuously. I've been through something when I ran for Council. That's why I think it's important to say that, continuously.
All right. All right, anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to thank everyone at Council for putting your faith in me to be Council President. I appreciate it.
And I thank yous also for the opportunity to work in a leadership position. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Just to be clear to the public, I don't anticipate any decisions being made when they come out of there, so at the ending of the executive session, we will likely adjourn unless something, I don't know.
I'd also like to invite Ms. Stu Cummings to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.